Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, November 28th County Commission. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning again and thank you for being here. If you need a listening device, Craig or Trish might be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go to routine business, please. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from November 21st.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three, our bills to be paid of $385,020 and 20 cents. Pay the bills.
Second.
A motion and do we have a second?
A second.
Oh, you did. Sorry. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Litz, do you have any comments?
Morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. At the behest of Commissioner Barth, I went over the bills a little bit here and the couple of notables on page 13 would be the grandstand tuck pointing at $45,000 and the grandstand riser caulking at $47,000. There's been deferred maintenance for a number of years. Other than that, there's nothing unusual except the $385,000 seems to be more in line with the regular business of the county. Also, I was asked to provide some numbers on payroll since that's something that doesn't show up on the bills. And for the payroll period of 11/22, which is two weeks, we had $1,145,534. For 11/9, we had $1,137,589. If you add those two together for one month, our payroll costs are $2,283,124. And our fourth quarter year to date for salaries paid out at Minnehaha County are $27,536,436. That is wages. Any questions about those numbers?
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Litz? Go ahead.
I have just a comment, actually. Thanks for bringing that forward and I would like to thank Mark Krins and his crew both for the deferred maintenance projects out at the fairgrounds that they worked so hard on. And the other kind of notable item there was that they replaced tile and did some flooring work out at the jail that was much needed and overdue as well, so.
And I'd like to add that that tuck pointing and caulking prevents further degradation of the grandstands. It puts it at a halt, so it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Any other questions or comments? And I think we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There are no reports. Personnel action, consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve routine personnel actions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item six, application for abatement, there are none. No notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices. Number nine, petition for compromise of lien, there aren't any. Opportunities for public comment. Before we start, I would like to just acknowledge the fact that last week we lost a really good supporter and I would say an expert on drainage-related issues and he was on our planning and zoning board and frankly involved in lots and lots of stuff and that was Al Moran who passed away unfortunately very quickly last week. So to his family, we send our condolences and certainly want to acknowledge the fact that he did a lot for a lot of people, so. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, you know, Al would come to our meetings when he did not have an issue before us. I mean, we, you can look around, we don't have a lot of citizens coming just to see us and to listen to us and to add their wisdom. And Al, you know, he ran for this job and fortunately they elected me instead, but he and I became good friends and I would call him up when I had questions about ag issues and we would tour parts of the county looking at this and that, he and I did together. It's sad that he won't be contributing his wisdom going forward.
Yep. Thank you, Jeff. You're a very class act. Any other comments? With that, we are at the opportunity for public comment. If anyone has any public comments that they'd like to make that are not on the agenda, we'd be happy to hear from you for your five-minute limit. So again, thank you for being here. And you do need to identify yourself.
All right. Well, I'm David Sokitis. You can tell what I'm going to talk about, but how do I advance to the next slide?
Down arrow.
Down arrow? All right. All right, so I'm David Sokitis and I'm talking about political problems that people would rather ignore. I'm talking about apparent corruption in Sioux Falls and I know this is a county meeting, but the problems that I see in Sioux Falls are endemic to our culture at large, so I thought I'd bring you up to speed. Now, my target audience is the citizens of Sioux Falls, but you know, we all are citizens too, so it's part of my target audience. One of the biggest, perhaps the biggest problem in America today is expensive elections because when you have expensive elections, then politicians have to spend all their time and effort looking for campaign donations, then they have to work for rich donors and the constitution doesn't become so important and the rights of regular people, they're not important. What counts is serving your campaign donors, particularly on a national scale. There was a change in Sioux Falls recently, maybe you've heard about it, that it makes elections more expensive for county council members. It used to be that a plurality was sufficient, now you have to have a majority to get an election. And the problem with that is it encourages more runoff elections and with a runoff, you don't have as much time, so you need more advertising money and well, that's a way to favor wealth in your elections. In Sioux Falls, there are problems with police violating civil rights. Last year, a woman was arrested for letting her husky play out in the snow, which is kind of like being arrested for letting your kids play on this way. If you're, if the police give you a warning ticket, that's false and you want to protest it, this happened to me personally, then the city will generally say that's okay with the police committing perjury and they wanted to issue a warrant for my arrest when I wanted to charge an officer with perjury for writing a false warning ticket. Definitely some problems there. And the city of Sioux Falls also condones assault by police. If you are subjected to fear of imminent bodily damage by police, if you are detained without suspicion, hey, that's quite all right. Again, this is a matter of personal experience. I think there's a problem. There's also issues with illegal police secrecy in Sioux Falls, probably in the county to maybe the state level. But the U.S. District Court has ruled that you have the right to record police. Well, I was threatened with arrest in Sioux Falls for trying to watch a couple of police do not very much at all. You've got to wonder what the heck these people are trying to hide. Our criminal justice system has quite a few problems, one of which is it's really hard to testify for the defense. I wrote a letter to the police department, another letter to the state's attorney and said, hey, I want to testify for this case. No response. Called the clerk of courts, got the runner out. How the heck do you testify if nobody's going to let you? And then there's problems with losing track of unpopular complaints and we've got issues there. The plea bargain system that is in common use here in the states is a good way to avoid the right to trial. What you do is you make a great mesh of overlapping laws so that one offense is actually multiple and then you can pressure people into plea bargaining so that they don't bother having to go through an expensive trial. How do you have trials if you can't afford it? Not a good plan. The jails have issues because we've got insufficient career training, we have too much recidivism, and what we need to do really is to change the overall perspective. We're focusing too much on punishment and not enough on healing and education. Secrecy, we've got huge problems in secrecy with the Sioux Falls government and there's quite a stack of secret issues there and well, you know, when you do things in secret, it looks really suspicious. Good way to hide corrupted dealings. We've got unconstitutional laws in the city, there's just a few right there. City ordinance 117 allows police to take your license for any good cause. I mean, it's hard to beat that for being unconstitutional. And there's this big deal about a TIF here in Sioux Falls, a lot of secrecy, a lot of hidden transfers of money, looks really suspicious. I'm running low on time. Ambulance service, got some problems there too. Oh my gosh, new administration building. Looks like we're trying to reboard a builder because there were cheaper options that were not utilized. We need to change things, obviously. All right, now I like to end my presentations with a little slide about enjoying beauty and here's a shot in Sioux Falls. It's pretty. But this time, I decided that, hey, people do some pretty things too. Here's a picture of my car and there's my license plate, which I think is really cool. And with that, have a good morning, everybody.
David, I think we, did we get his address? Or do we have it on file?
I have it on file.
Okay, we have it on file, so we're all okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for letting citizens speak and air their concerns.
With that, is there anyone else who would like to speak this morning in the public comments section? Thank you. With that, we'll go into regular business. The first item is to authorize the chair to sign a revised police service agreement with Minnehaha County and the city of Hartford. Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department, good morning.
Good morning, sir. Mike Walsh, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. It says Joe Bosman. I am not Joe Bosman. Obviously. I think he's taller than me. Yes, a few weeks ago, we appeared and asked for you to sign the contract with Hartford. After that, Hartford contacted the sheriff's office and requested some more hours to be patrolled in the city, so we've redone the contract. On paragraph three, that's gone from 40 hours a week to 60 hours per week and I would ask that the commission sign it.
Do you want to have any questions for Mike? Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm just wondering, I mean, that's 20 additional hours for the staff and I'm just wondering how that affects the staffing levels in other places in the county.
I, at this point, we can accommodate that. A couple of the other towns have cut a few hours in the past, not as many as 20, but they've cut a few hours, so at this point, we can handle the additional staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
Captain, I'm happy that they want more coverage, but 20 hours a week, that's a half a person and so are we charging them enough to actually pay the cost of half a deputy, you know, and their car and benefits and ammunition, whatever?
Yes, sir. The rate stays the same and when Lieutenant Bosman figures out the rate, he figures all of those things in. The major change that'll happen is that we'll require a deputy to be in there a lot more hours in the early evening and late afternoon. Those are the hours that Hartford requested. We've already, we already have one deputy there during the day and a school resource officer, but during the times that those two deputies aren't there, they requested a few more, a little bit more visibility and more patrolling.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the revised police services agreement with Hartford.
Second. We have a motion and a second to sign the revised police services agreement with the city of Hartford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for your service too, by the way. Item 11 is to authorize the chair to sign a 2017 lease agreement with the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society, the Minnehaha County Historical Society and the Minnehaha County. Bill Hoskins.
Good morning, commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. What I brought before you today are two separate lease agreements, one with the Minnehaha County Historical Society who leases space on the first floor of the Old Courthouse Museum, one for the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society who leases space on the second floor of the Old Courthouse Museum. Both of these leases would provide that space to those organizations free and as a consequence, the lease needs to be approved by unanimous vote of the commission. And this is the lease for starting January 1st of 2018 through December 31st of 2018. And I'd ask you to authorize the chair to sign those leases.
Any questions for Bill? Commissioner?
It just seems like an unusual requirement that a unanimous approval. What, where's that from?
I believe that's state law and it goes back, I believe, to 2001 when the counties were required, if they were providing space free, that it would require a unanimous vote of that commission.
Interesting. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth?
Dean, I think that that applies to when we donate stuff directly to someone outside of government. So if we were to give a bulldozer to Jeff Barth Construction Company, you'd have to have unanimous vote. And in this case though, these folks are contributing a lot to our community here. Their citizens go in there researching genealogical issues, even people from out of state show up to research that, some of them from Utah, I know. On the other hand, also, they constitute the majority of the folks on the abandoned cemeteries board, don't they, Bill?
That's true. I think the genealogy society members in particular populate the abandoned cemeteries board.
And also...
And both societies contribute. The genealogy society, their office is open to the general public noon to four daily and the county historical society has a meeting that's open to the general public once a month and have some great programs.
They also help people that are lost in the museum.
Commissioner Barth, I always am amused by your examples. Thank you. And I've been to the, met the people up in the genealogical and society up there, great people and yeah, they don't, I mean, they work for free. I mean, they're up there volunteering, so they do great work, so thank you. I was going to say, why did you use construction? You say you like a liquor license. That we would have believed. We've had this relationship for what, 35 years?
Well, they've been occupying space for 35 years or so that I know of.
Okay.
And I think perhaps longer. And it was in 2001 that we started having a formalized relationship through a lease agreement.
We're looking for a motion or...
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Bill. Item 13, no, I'm sorry, item 12 is to consider a motion to allocate 100% of the 2017 county surplus property sale proceeds of $21,679.60 to the general fund or allocate $1,580 to the highway fund with a balance of $20,099.60 going to the general fund.
Good morning, Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And Mr. Chair, you've stated my case quite well, so unless you've got some questions, we'd be looking for some action on this.
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Bender?
Just procedurally, I know we just had, looked at the highway department having sold some things and it looks like you also have some highway department things.
That's correct, yes.
And I'm curious why that is.
You know, I think some of their bigger items, they arranged to do it on a different sale method of it's an online machinery, something that's peculiar to the highways line of equipment and they move things there and then we sort of get some leftover things here because they have desks, chairs and items like that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm just going to make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to allocate the highway portion of $1,580 to the highway fund with a balance of $20,099.60 going to the general fund.
Second. We have a motion and a second to make an allocation just stated for the county surplus property sale proceeds and the general fund and the highway fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Oh, no, you had a nay.
The chair? I voted no.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry.
I know, I'm the minority, as usual.
That's okay. I apologize.
I'd like to ask one other question. The items that did not sell, what are we doing with them?
Well, I've got some comments about that if I could, Mr. Chair. You know, as we look at the total gross amount minus the auctioneer's fees and things, other things, the things that we're required to put on this auction by state statute are capital assets and they have a value of over $5,000 on the books, which may or may not be accurate. Anyway, if you look at, you deduct the vehicles that we took out of there, you have a balance of $3,600 and a highway gets $1,580. That leaves $2,028.50 that the county benefited from the sale of a whole wide array of items out there. And what this sale winds up being, you know, especially for the things of questionable value or that we just put out there, is that, that $2,000. But you know, going through this, we catalog these items, we transport them, there's handling and then at the end, out of that $2,028, the city dings us for a disposal fee for the items that didn't sell. And so, you know, from a purely business standpoint, and I don't know, maybe, I don't think we're required by state law to do it, but that last $2,000 of small things, there's paper racks, there's old printers, there's a variety of items that just don't sell out there, I would just question the value of whether we should go forward in doing those smaller items or look at it in a more reasonable fashion and dispose of them some other manner. I just wanted to put that out there because it doesn't seem, if I was a businessman looking at that $2,000 for the amount of work and labor, the things that we have into it, I simply don't think it's worth the effort.
Commissioner Barth?
So Bob, are we certain that the nonprofits all got a shot at this stuff and that this is absolutely junk that nobody wants?
Yeah. The list goes out. Required by state statute. Efficiency in government. We do put that list out to the nonprofits.
Any other questions for Mr. Litz? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is to authorize the chair to sign a release and settlement agreement between the county and Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railroad.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Booth, Highway Superintendent. Thanks for your motion on the previous item as well. Earlier this summer, we had an agreement set up with the state of South Dakota Department of Transportation and working with the BNSF Railroad to replace two crossings, one of them on County Highway 118 and one of them on County Highway 143, both just north of Lyons. And that repair work was completed during the construction portion of the work, the BNSF Railroad construction staff did a significant amount of damage to the roadway and also to the ground adjacent to the roadway. The in slope is what it's called, the beginning slope of the ditch. And so we submitted a claim immediately with the BNSF and the way that their claim procedure works, the county in this case had to have a contractor go and complete the repair work and then submit the quotes and the estimates and the invoices to the BNSF for reimbursement. And so our state's attorney office has been working with the BNSF in finalizing the agreement that's required for signature prior to receiving the reimbursement check and that has all been completed. So now the field work has been completed, the attorneys reviewing the paperwork has been completed. We hired two contractors in this case, BX Civil Construction out of Bell Rapids, did $15,000 of dirt work and Block Top Paving out of Sioux Falls did $21,663 worth of asphalt work for a total of $36,663. And so this agreement, if you will approve it today, will allow the BNSF to write a check to the county for this dollar amount. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer them at this time.
So anyone have any questions for D.J. this morning?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the settlement agreement with Burlington Northern and sign a release. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 14, Commissioner Bender is going to recuse herself. We also had a legal opinion and the individual wrote that. I was going to ask her this morning to come just to make sure that if we had a question, she'd be able to answer that, but I will go ahead and read it and hopefully Judy will be able to come in a few minutes. My fault for not coordinating that better. Consider a motion to accept or reject the single bid for purchase of the property located at 908 Northwest Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Legal, legally described as lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 inclusive and lots 25 and 26, all in block 52, airport addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. According to the recorded plat thereof, the governing board may reject any or all bids. However, if the governing board accepts a bid, it must be the bid of the highest bidder. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioner and Administrative Officer. I have been this agenda item in front of you a few times this past year as we've been working through the process on 908. 908 is a building that we have not used for a little over a year. It was purchased a little over 20 years ago and I think the public would be familiar with it as the building that Volunteers of America was in located on Northwest Avenue. So in June, you declared its surplus, you directed the office to get a professional appraisal on the property. That was received the end of the summer and that as-is fee simple estate market value was 2.45 million. You then, after receiving that, you looked at options for sale on this building, which includes sealed bids, auction or utilizing a broker. You directed our office to prepare documents and to put it up for sealed bid. We went through that and the bids were opened on November 15th at 10:30 a.m. The Auditor's Office received one bid for $1.1 million from Bender Commercial representing Dal Rommel Village. That 1.1 million represents 45% of the appraisal of the appraised as-is that we received. So with that, we are asking the commission for direction on whether to, as Commissioner Benninga read through on there, the governing board may reject any and all bids, however, if the governing board accepts a bid, it may be the bid of the highest bidder. So we're looking for action on that and here to answer any questions you may have.
So you want to have any questions of Carol at this point?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So if we were to list it with a broker, then do we have to sell it for 90% or can we just beat 1.1 million, so to speak?
Frankly, that was my question and why I asked for Judy to be here, but I didn't ask until three minutes ago, so it's my fault. I think that's a great question. I'm not sure I understand that piece for sure.
Right. Yeah, obviously, well, if I may just further...
Go ahead.
You know, we, it took us a couple of years to sell that property that the museum was gifted and we even changed brokers during that time. And I think that it's generally the case that million-dollar or multiple million-dollar properties take some time to dispose of and didn't the old Capitol or HSBC building on Benson Road take a long time to even find an occupant? I don't know if it's even been sold, but it was vacant for a while. The Hutchison Technology Building sold quickly but at considerably reduced cost and so I just, sometimes I think for a project like this, it might take a little patience on our part. And so I, I just, sometimes I think for a, a, a project like this, it might take a little patience on our part.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, for Carol. On the appraisal process, did we pay for that? How did we...
Yes.
Okay, we did. Okay. What did...
Yes.
Do you know how much we paid for that appraisal?
Um, it was between, I believe it was between $3,000 and $3,500.
Okay, so pretty much going right on a commercial appraisal. Who, who did the appraisal?
Shaq did.
Shaq did, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment. I really feel like forty-five percent of the appraised value is not good enough for us to settle on. And I really think we need to do our due diligence to explore, whatever, to, to market this, because it wasn't marketed. I think that in the area that it's at, it's a valuable piece of property. And I guess I think we need to move forward with looking at a broker, and at least trying to market it. And we do have Judy back, so we can have an opinion.
Sorry to run you around this morning.
Well, that's okay.
Jeff, if you would like to ask Maggie your question, just to clarify?
So if we were to put it on the market with a broker, list it with a broker, then do we need to sell it for ninety percent of the estimated value? Or can we just seek to beat the 1.1 million that we've been proposed?
Well, you're asking the question with a conclusion already. So, let me just pull the statute as, because I think Commissioner Karski wants in as well, so that'll give me a moment to look it up.
Sure. Carol, did you have any other comments?
No.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Karski hit a comment.
Oh, go, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. While Maggie's looking that up, I, I'm siding with Commissioner Heiburger on this. And this, this is a valuable piece of land and a very, I mean, popular and growing and popular piece of, or area of town. And the building, the structure has good bones. I mean, it's, it is a solid building. There's absolutely nothing wrong with, with the property or the building, location, structure, et cetera. So 1.1 is just not, not enough for me to move off of wanting to get rid of it.
That's my feeling as well.
Do you remember, Carol, what the value of the land and the value of the building was on the appraisal? Yeah, separately? Okay. I'm not sure I completely agree that the building is worth as much as we think it is. The land, obviously, has a value in that location, but just because it has structural soundness doesn't mean it has any value.
Well, out in Virginia, where I have some relatives living in the Arlington area, they buy a property for $700,000, tear it down, and build two McMansions on it. And I'm talking about buildings, houses built in the 1940s, you know, that look pretty nice otherwise, but the land is worth more than the house.
Yeah. We'll give Maggie a few more minutes.
No pressure.
Yeah, of course not. None felt. As we're waiting, Mr. Chairman, I, I would just appreciate, since I didn't hear Commissioner Heiburger's comments, if she could just repeat that as I multitask here.
Sure.
I just said that I, I felt like it was important for us to do our due diligence and explore other opportunities, as in looking for a, a broker, because I don't feel like forty-five percent of the appraised value is, is something that we should consider at this point, being elected officials. And, and this is a taxpayer's money, and I think we should do better.
I did ask last week, just to, and it doesn't make that much difference at this juncture of the game, so to speak, or in the conversation, is that it appears that the operating cost of utilities and maintenance and all of those wonderful things is about $11,000 a year to maintain, somewhere around there. That's an estimate. Just for your information only, not dramatic difference.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
When the, the numbers of the, just over the $11,000 came in, we neglected to add insurance, which is about $4,600 a year as well. So you're at sixteen-six for annual cost for an empty building. And then, you know, to Mr. Barth's question, just from another life, I know that when you've got an older building like that, that's sixty, seventy years old, to do a complete renovation of that building, the cost can easily be one, one and a half to two times the cost of tearing it down and putting a new one up. So I'm thinking that the land here, Gerald, is, is what we're looking at.
So maybe, Mr. Chair, we should again delve into the value of the land as opposed to the building. Is that something we could find?
I really don't want to defer it again, but we could do that for, I mean, if that's a big difference between the decision-making process, we want to do what is best for the commission. But I'm not as convinced that the building is worth as much as...
Are we on the calendar as far as how much time we have to accept or reject this bid?
That's another good question.
I think that's in your bid notice, Mr. Chairman. And I think that was specified, that it would be considered at the next meeting. We talked about that last week. And I think there's a statutory timeframe overall, but you've, 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 you've not exceeded that, so...
Thank you.
I do have the answer on the other, on Commissioner Barth's question, but I defer to Carol if she had something to offer before I say what that statute says.
Yes, I was just gonna go through and... It basically said that, I'm not finding it right in front of me right now, but the statement along with those sealed bids was that if you would not, is that if you have somebody else open the bids, i.e. the auditor's office, Olivia goes through and does that, that you, they would be reviewed at the next, they would be brought to the next meeting of the governing board. Is as much clear definition as we found in this.
I'll let you, Maggie, if you would, just please read that, because it's pretty clear that we have some limitations.
So if I understand the question, Mr. Chairman, since I was out of the room, Commissioner Barth had asked if the property is, is placed on the market with a broker, the question was whether or not the ninety percent of appraised value still needed to be met. Is that the question? Is that right?
That, or if it just needs to beat the 1.1 that we had in the sealed bid. In other words, if we had an offer of 1.9 million, could we consider that?
So the statute is six thirteen five point two, and I'll just read it as the chair has directed. "Sale of government property through broker dash offers dash notice." That's the header. "In lieu of receiving sealed bids, as required by this chapter, a school district, municipality, or county may sell real property at public auction, or by listing the property with one or more licensed real estate brokers. The governing body may accept an offer..." Excuse me. "The governing body may accept any offer for purchase of real property, provided the offer exceeds ninety percent of the appraised value of the real property as required by six dash thirteen dash two. If a governing body sells real property by public auction or through a real estate broker, the governing body shall give notice of the sale of the real property as required by six thirteen four." I realize that's the statute, but it makes, it doesn't make any sense when we can do sealed bids and take forty-five percent, and then if we get a broker, we have to take ninety percent. That's...
We'd have to double the price.
That doesn't make any sense legislate, legislatively. I just, I agree that's what the law is, but that's crazy. I don't think I'm still ready to sell it for that 1.1.
Any other comments?
Perhaps we could leave it on low heat, and again, consider this next week.
What additional information are we gonna ask for?
The value of the land itself. I mean, we may have a hundred percent of the value of the land, and, and, you know, basically nothing for the building at this point. My wife's grandma used to invite us over for dinner, and we'd say no, and she'd say, "Well, I'll turn the heat down, and you can come tomorrow." Which we would try to decline also, but I, I think we should further consider this. And I, I'm in agreement with Cindy. I hate to just drop it, and maybe, maybe we can further investigate the, the value of the bare land as opposed to just the building. And that could be already fully valued in this bid.
I would look for a motion, and first of all, Maggie, thank you for finding more of the facts for us, or clarifying, I guess.
For a week.
What's that?
I'll make a motion to defer action for a week.
I'll second it.
Other conversations? Any questions, comments? The only comment that I would like is, I would like to see the difference in the value between the land and the building.
Right.
For the total value, because I think that does have an influence on the conversation. We have a motion and a second to defer for one more week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to one.
If, if I might, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Karski, what, what would your preferred result have been?
Reject the bid and take a new approach.
Okay, interesting.
Commissioner Heiburger?
My comment for letting it defer one week is because, since there's four of us, we've got to have three in order to pass it. And I want to make sure that we do, because if we end up tied, we're gonna defer it another week anyway. So that's my reason for deferring.
I agree with you. Item fifteen is county commission liaison reports. Commissioner Barth?
Last night, we had planning and zoning, and it was the fastest planning and zoning meeting I have ever been involved in, I think. What was it, Maggie? Twenty-two minutes?
Yeah.
And we had joint with the city, and then we had our own, and there was no objection to any item on either calendar. And so we got, we knocked it out of the park. I'd also say that our chairperson, Mike Cypher, did say he is not going to try to stay on our board after serving twenty years now in, on the planning and zoning board. He says it's maybe time for another opinion, and for him to do something else. But anyway, that's a long time to serve the county. If anybody ever looks at what we pay these people, I think it's $15 a meeting plus mileage. Ooh, baby. Anyway, I, we are still, we have two people, or two positions that are up this year, Mike Cypher's and Becky Randall's. Becky has put in an application to stay, and we are still accepting applications till the end of the month.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for contracts, litigation, and personnel.
That's my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We'll be back in about ten minutes.